Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Auxiliary Bishop John Dougherty, who passed away over the weekend. Please keep the Dougherty family in your prayers tonight.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Here. Disprints with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A memorandum received from Kaylee M. Pacolski, Director of Human Resources, regarding March 2022 position updates for the city of Scranton. 3B correspondence received from OECD received April 14, 2022, regarding Open Gov Cumulative License Permit Report. 3C minutes of the composite pension board meeting held February 16, 2022. 3D single tax office city funds distributed dated April 8, 2022. 3E controller's report for the month ending March 31, 2022. 3F minutes of the historic architectural review board meeting held November 18, 2021.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I have comments on two, but I'm going to save it for fifth order.
Okay. Anyone else have comments on any third order items?
Just in terms of the single tax office funds distributed, I did speak with Kathy Westler this afternoon, and moving forward, there will be a year-to-date comparison. She already sent us the one that will be in third order for next week with a year-to-date comparison. So that will be done moving forward. They've been sending them weekly because the money's been coming in, but I think after next week's one, it will be on a bi-weekly basis instead of weekly.
Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. So the Ark of Northeastern Pennsylvania is looking, asked me to read this, if there's anybody out there looking for a rewarding way to earn some additional cash while soaking up the sun, they're looking for summer camp counselors, and it would be from July 6 through August 9. Requirements are a high school diploma or GED, 18 years of age, and a valid driver's license. So if anyone's interested, I know some seniors for the past couple of years got involved with this, it was very rewarding. So if that's the case and you're interested, please apply. You can stop by the administrative offices at the address listed below, which is 115 Meadow Avenue, listed below or online. You can find that on their Facebook page. On your application, please specify job title Camp Counselor, and application should be submitted by April 15. And mandatory orientation week is June 27, and times to be determined. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
I have a few. Oh, go ahead. Thank you. On Saturday, April 30, there will be the Pine Brook Family Arts Festival, and that'll take place from 12 to 4:00. That will be located at 927 Capous Avenue, and it's the first time that they're running this festival. It's part of UNC of NEPA, Lackey County Arts and Culture Department, and it's a part of the Pine Brook Revitalization Plan, and they'll have a lot of family fun activities there, including music, axe-throwing for kids, which I'm assuming it's not real axes. So that'll be good. And there'll be food and lots of fun, for sure. So that's two weekends from now if anyone is interested in attending that. Thank you.
Do any other council members have announcements?
Yes. Just a reminder, with DPW, garbage collection is off by one day. So typically, if you have your garbage picked up on Friday, it's going to happen Saturday of this week. So everything is moved one day this week. Also, I had mentioned, I think last week or previously, that I guess this Friday this weekend is Earth Day, so there's going to be a cleanup at Naug Park. I'm sure there's going to be cleanups throughout the neighborhoods around the city, but I was asked to announce from 9 till 3 p.m. at Naug Park. I think that's going to be spearheaded by Bob Gattens from the Scranton Municipal Rec Authority and many of their volunteers. That's this coming Saturday. And also, to get back to Mr. Coyne, I'd asked a question about the two officers who recently had DUI arrests. We sent a request down to the Scranton Police Department to see whether they were suspensions with or without pay, and we have not received a response as of yet. Thank you.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time? Mr. Waldemar?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
First on the list is Joan Honewanetz.
Joan Honewanetz, Scranton. Today is April 19th, day 109 of anno domini 2022. Thirty percent of the year is gone. So what is the status of negotiations on the various union contracts?
It's my understanding negotiations are still ongoing.
Yeah. I cannot imagine that the unions will accept a 2% or 2.5% or 3% pay raise when you have 8.5% inflation, which is not going to abate anytime soon. And I'm wondering how long these contract negotiations are going to drag on, especially if eventually they go to arbitration, which leads me into my next comment, and that is the March Controller's Report. I was a little taken aback when I saw under Human Resources that Offburg and Associates were paid $97,397.19, and I'm assuming that is for their role in these union negotiations. Apparently, that's under professional services, and the budget for the entire year is $500,000. And I checked back in November of, or back in 2021, the budget for professional services was only $393,000, so they upped it by $107,000. Well, they've already eaten $97,000 for contract negotiations, and if anybody makes money off of this, obviously, it's going to be the lawyers once again. It's almost like the $2 million or so that it cost the county when they had the prison investigations and had a team of lawyers reading emails. They're going to go home fat, dumb, and happy. I think my next incarnation, I'll come back as a lawyer. It seems very profitable. Although on the positive side, 5C, that Greg and Joan Sunday are making their second $5,000 contribution to the fire department. I think that's a singular act of generosity from a family to which we owe a lot of gratitude. Item 3A in the backup, the HR memo on position updates. I noticed that a lot of the positions were posted only internally. Why is it that we don't post everything, both internally and externally? Don't the residents and taxpayers of the city have the right to apply for positions within the city? Why is it posted only internally?
So I believe that's the first step in terms of the CBAs, where someone could bump into that position, and then, you know, then you have to wait for those dominos to fall to see where the actual open position is to then go out externally. I believe that's the case.
Well, I no longer, you know, have property taxes since I sold my property, although I pay indirectly because I pay rent. But if I were paying a property tax, I'd be pretty irritated that I should have the same right, if I wanted to work for the city, to apply for position. I don't see the logic of that, and I don't see the ethics of it. I think that that is a position that has seen its day. It smacks of nepotism. And there's an awful lot of families that are employed by various governments.
I think that's just following the language of the CBAs.
Well, the CBA should be changed. That's not the only thing that should be changed. Their contracts should not end on December 31. We should not be in this position of having expired contracts and we're in negotiations because it's costing the taxpayer money. If you just look up, we're paying lawyers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Les Spindler.
Evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident homeowner, taxpayer. I talked about this many times. Utilities are ruining our city streets. I drive all over the city. Main Avenue, North Main Avenue by where Dunkin' Donuts is, there's a pave cut there for months, and months, and months. It's filled in, but it's not level. And if you don't slow down, it'll ruin your car. There's another one on the 2100 block of Pittston Avenue coming down the hill. I drive that almost every day. It's a huge pave cut. Again, you have to slow down to like 10 miles an hour, or you're going to ruin your vehicle. And that's been ongoing for like at least seven months now. That's been the same way. Do we have a pave inspector, pave cut inspector?
Yes, the city has one.
Well, I don't think he or she is doing their job because these things go on for months and months and months. You know, your cars can get ruined if you don't slow down, and if you don't know they're there, then, you know, it could cost you a lot of money. And plus, on Pittston Avenue, not only the pave cuts, Pittston Avenue is a mess. I don't know if anybody drives on it. I drive on it almost every day. There's potholes and rough road. That whole thing should be milled and paved. I know that's penned up, it's not the city. It's a mess. Next thing. Last fall, I came here and talked about the DPW supervisor that came and painted lines all on my corner and said they were going to take care of the curbs. He said, "We'll be here before the weather gets cold." Well, they didn't come. And now the weather's turning nicer, so I hope they're going to come around and do what they said they're going to do. Next thing. Last week in the paper, I think it was, I saw the list of streets to be paved, and I saw Court Street. It's not too far from where I live. I drive on that every day. I hope that includes the underpass not far from the Village of Tri-Park. That underpass is a mess. I mean, it's been patched and patched, and it comes up, and it's, like I said, you have to almost stop to go through there. It's a mess. So I hope that, I hope it's going to go all the way up to where that is. And lastly, the supposed pocket park on Linden Street, Linden, Wyoming. I don't see any progress there at all. Is there an update on that?
So they're testing the fill for the second time to make sure it's clean fill, and it should be, it should be done within the next 30 days, at least filled, and then, you know, the other work will begin.
Because I know it's-
But I will get an update for you on that.
It's just sitting there with these huge, huge slabs of concrete sitting there.
Yeah, there's certain testing requirements the fill has to go through. At least that's my understanding of it, but I'll get an update for you on that, on a more exact timeline.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Bob Boles.
Bob Boles, Scranton. First off on 5D relates to Griffin Pond. I think it's great somebody's donating some money to them. Council, I think you individually or as a group should visit Griffin Pond and get a better understanding of exactly what they do there, instead of hearing rumors and stuff like that. Takes a lot to understand, the understanding of the job they do for the animals. I personally, through Fresh Pet, have donated thousands of dollars of Fresh Pet dog and cat food to them. My company transports it for free. We never charge a penny to take it. I give them storage trailers when they need it, whatever they need up there. But anyone who criticized them should be ashamed of themselves because what they do for this community, you can't put it in words. And I think they should be applauded rather than criticized by some people that have criticized them. It's time to really pay attention what they do for these animals. You know, people lead by example. A leader leads by example, not by talking about it. We have the Biden signs. The council and the mayor took our voice away and agreed to put them out there. Changed Spruce Street to Biden Street, the expressway, and signs on 81. Well, if anybody's paying attention to what's going on in this country right now, watching this blithering idiot as he is, and I say that as an American citizen, of what Biden's doing and the humiliation he's creating on us as the people in the city of Scranton, I'm asking you to be leaders tonight, to vote a referendum, to remove those signs, go back to Spruce Street, and if you are real leaders and true leaders, put it on a referendum for us so we, the people, and that's an important thing you need to understand. It's not about you guys, it's about us. The humiliation we get, thousands of people see him on 81, we're being made fools of publicly and nationally every time he opens his mouth, is to put a referendum on tonight to remove those signs, if you got what it takes to do what's right for us, the people. And that's why I came here tonight, because I've been all over the country, and I hear it all over, through the trucker convoys, we were involved. It's a humiliation, it's an embarrassment, and you guys are part of it while we're getting it. So do what's right for us. And Kyle, I brought up last week, the last time I was here, I asked you, if you become a representative, now that you're sitting at council as the president, you were part of the Biden fiasco, are you going to hear the voice of the people if elected, or are you going to do just what you did here against us and the people and not pay attention to what we have to say? This is important for us, who we put in place, especially in a higher position than Scranton City Council. Or you got, as a leader, I looked at your billboards, a true leader, if you're a leader, and don't take this the wrong way, but if you're a leader tonight, put it on a motion to remove those signs and respect the will of the people. Here is a councilman, as you would if you were a representative. Respect us, and we'll respect you, but that's what I'm here to ask for tonight. You know, a funny thing went on. I'm going to demonstrate it while you people all on are who Biden is. Oh, there was nobody there. This is what our embarrassment is, the humiliation. I'd rather see you put a sign up the office on Spruce Street than a Biden name. At least that office had credibility and had respect all over the world where I've traveled. People bring up the office. So if you're going to do anything, do what's right. Do what's right for us. That's all I'm asking you to do tonight. If you really want to be a true leader, now's the time to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boles. Next on the list, Tom Coyne.
Members of council, Tom Coyne, Manuka. Thank you, Mr. King, for getting back to me on that, even though it was a non-answer, at least it is an answer that you're still waiting for a response. Last week before this body, I asked about fast-tracking money for the charity food banks who during COVID supplied food to nearly, to the community, and to continue with that even, and that they continue with food bank and distributing to the people who are now suffering from the increased cost of food sources. It was mentioned that they were reviewing all of the surveys for the Recovery Act Fund, and once that was done, they would have more of a view on how they will distribute it. And until then, no decisions on that funds have been made. But last week, an article in the newspaper seems to be oddly contradictory to that stance. About three or four weeks ago, city council passed a funding grant for 10 electric cars and charging stations. It was pointed out that the $90,000 for the car would pay for about 10% of the cost, and a council member wondered where the other money was coming from. Well, it appears that like with all funding for the good of the people, the funding for the electric cars was already allocated and scooped off the top of the Recovery Act Fund. Nothing says fiscal responsibility like we take our cut off the top before you get a chance to choose, to serve the public. We serve the government first because the people are not the priority. Next, we have a new truck for the fire department, one that comes forth to obligate the city to a seven-year, $715,000 contract, all signed by our current business administrator, for a bid that was bid out during the pandemic when he was not even the administrator. As the order was put in for, in August of 2020, for this truck, and Larry West started on July 16 of 2021. Who ordered this, as it is devoid of any initial paperwork, no record on bids, sign-offs on, or even negotiating on expenditures? It says it will be paid from the capital fund and is already allocated from the community development business grants. What block grants was it already allocated from, and who allocated the funds since it has not even been approved for purchase before this body? And why did it take from August of 2020, 17 months, to get before this body, from the time it was ordered? And the period that it states under that contract before this body is under three weeks? The contract starts, per that contract, on May 1, or 12 days from now. How can council sign a contract that's required to be out here for three weeks when it is not even handed to you after 17 months, giving you a period of under three weeks to process it? This is wrong. Obviously, you did not approve from it. Maybe it was the grant was asked for, and the purchasing agreement was done by the fire department beforehand because they didn't know they needed city council's approval and did not know that city council needed to be informed at what future expenditures they decided to cut out of budgets. This is not the first time, the second time, nor the third time, that things are hitting this council's board with less than three weeks before they are supposed to be paid. Whoever's doing this is really jamming up council horribly to say that we now have to do it because our reduced interest rate will run out within a few weeks if we don't jump right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring up the CDBG funds and the fire truck in fifth order. Next on the list, Ron Elman.
Hello, council. I don't know whether you people know it. Tuesday's Old People's Day at Garrity's. I should know better than go on a Tuesday. They're not my best fan club when I go. But today, I wrote this down real fast so I'd remember it. Today is this woman that was at Garrity's. I ran into her at the Goodwill store, then I ran into her at the Dollar Store, finally she had some words to say about poor Roddy. She said, "I wasn't a nice man. I'm a Nazi Klan head white supremacist who should be vanished from council, speaking forever." So I knew you'd like that part of her. She said, "I'm a low-down Republican who should be deported." Now, I don't know where you could deport me unless it was back south, but that's her stand. She said, "I was so deplorable that the Proud Boys wouldn't touch me, that I'm uncivilized." I think I have surpassed anybody's conduct as far as she's concerned. Now, quickly, for a year or so, I've been whining about how bad my neighborhood's gone downhill. The two houses on the 2600 block directly across from me, one sold for over $100,000 last year, and one sold this year for over $100,000. The two houses over was a house owned by a fellow in Long Island that he milked and dried. It sold for $40,000 a couple weeks ago, 40-something. Directly across of that was a small house that sold two or three weeks ago in the 40s. And the people that moved in there is what everybody in this city that has property would dread. And this isn't, I sit here, you people keep talking about blight and stopping it and getting grants to tear down houses. You wouldn't have to tear down houses if you didn't allow people like Bond and this guy from Long Island to milk this property dry and not pay taxes to start with, and then the worst of the worst come. Yesterday, last night, the day before last night, I mean, when I took my dog out after 11 o'clock news, I heard noise. This jerk is sitting in his car on the front grass playing the radio so loud I could hear it half a block up. That's my new neighbor. That's what destroys the property values in this whole area around me. I got two junkyards behind me. Nobody said a thing. You just don't care. The one house where the school bus has been parked for a couple years, the lady that lived there about 10 years ago told me they condemned it, that's why she moved, and there's somebody living there. I don't know the circumstances. What good is it, like, taking care of your property when you have someone creating- What good is it, like, taking care of your property when, when you have someone creating poverty, three or four houses up the street? They got two barking dogs that bark when a leaf turns over with a little homemade wire and cardboard fence. Right next to them is where the people, the school bus stops for your children. Not my children, your children are walking around there. Cars are going 60, 80 miles an hour right through there where Wells and Main is. You got good laws on the books, and you just don't enforce them. That's because we got a pitiful licensing bureau. Like I said last week, every last one of them ought to be fired and put some people to work that want the jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Mr. Elman, would you be able to provide us addresses for the properties that are, so that we could send somebody out?
I'm not saying that. You're not doing your job. It's, 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 it's more than one department and more than council not doing their job.
I, I under, I, I understand, but it, but we can't, we can't pass on information if we don't know exactly where to send code enforcement to. So if you could give us just the addresses of the, of the properties in your neighborhood that are an issue, and we'll, we'll pass them along, and hopefully someone will go out and take a look at them.
Yes, sir.
All right?
You know, it's, it's a shame. I'm 86 years old. I won't be around much longer. My two boys don't want my house. I have, like I said, real quick, the insurance raised my rates. Now the house is, I'm paying more insurance than it's worth because the neighborhood dropped.
All right. I, I understand.
It's not my fault the neighborhood doesn't look good no more.
I understand.
I cut my grass the other day. When I told you I got my lawn mower started, and I tried to take care of it.
I understand, Mr. El, but we'll talk, we'll talk after, and I'll get, I'll get some addresses after.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhaust the sign-in sheet for tonight. Would anyone else like to address council?
Marie Schumacher, taxpayer in the city of Scranton. I guess maybe it's that we're two days off from a, a holiday when they, there's lots of extra food that you would normally have on a Sunday. And, you know, like that piece of pie that's sitting out there, and you can't eat it, and then later in the evening, you go out and you take, oh, I'll just take one bite. And then you go back in, and the next commercial, you go back and you have another one, and soon it's gone. And I think that pie might be that rescue plan. There should be by now. There were several things that were done, both online and in person. And I think that by now, we should have had a master plan here for you to look at.
We're, we're getting that next week.
Because you are.
Yes, and answers coming back in to discuss that next week for in caucus.
Okay, because I am really worried. One of the, one of the places, it was, I, I think it was the, my favorite front page of the Times Tribune was the February 10th, where on the one side, if you recall, I brought it in, it had the sprucing up the former Bruce, Spruce Street project. And then on the right side, it had the, that they're going after, the city's going after the, they're reducing the monies that the people on the 1700 block of Wyoming Avenue had won from the jury. So it just speaks volumes. Now, on Wyoming Avenue, Mr. Schuster, you asked Frank last week to do something, um, look into that. Do you have a, is that back for tonight?
I did get an email. I, I think it came out today, if that's right, Frank, about they signed an agreement, the, the neighbor that they were waiting on signed the agreement. So that should be moving forward, or I'd like to see it moving forward. But that's what they were waiting on there for 1700 of Wyoming.
Okay, excellent. Okay, back to that project. Have you ever, I don't recall that that project has ever come to this body. Am I incorrect?
The, the final fix?
No, 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 no. I know, I know, back to, back to the former Spruce Street.
No, that's going to be included in the final, in the projects that we approve in under ARPA. But I, but we, I could assure you that no ARPA money will be spent on Biden Street.
Good.
That will not be in the final plan.
Okay, very good, because I, I just see these little nibbles coming and nothing left at the end of the, the time. So I'm really happy about that. Now, last week, I spoke on the paving program somewhat, too. Do any of you go out and actually look at the roads that are being done? Because in addition to, you know, the, the information that I shared last week, there are streets there that have been done in the last couple of years.
On, on which list? The list that was in third order last week?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Um, and like, again, we've talked in the past about changing the codes and doing things. I would put something like that in, in the code, that the DPW, we've got this open government now that's supposed to give us so much information, but do we have what each block, last time it was paved? I don't think so. And so I think that should be, we should have that information. And I don't, I think there are a lot of roads that I have traveled over that are a lot worse than some of those roads that are on that list. So I think it would behoove you to go out and look at some of those, and also to look at the roads that come into the city. I mean, I, I just think, you know, you come down Music Street, and it's, you know, you're gonna, beautiful city, beautiful architecture, once you get across the bridge. But before that, I have run out of time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council this evening?
Good evening, council. Dave Dawson, resident. I'm sure you can hear me. Um, once again, we got the speech, and it gets worse every time. Here's a good one. Silent majority against GOP's moral panic. And it's all about critical race theory in high school. Majority of the parents believe that their kids are getting a good education, and it's like 72%. And they say that their local teachers are good. And, uh, in Florida, they banned half of the math books because it pushes critical race theory. I mean, banning books, really? How far does this have to go with these nuts that even the one we have to listen to from every other week? I mean, I'm all for Griffin Pond, and I got my doggy from Griffin Pond, but, you know, it's just, uh, ungodly. The reason I don't come here talking about it, real lot of stuff from local, because I think things are going fair. Can't get, always get what you want, but, you know, you don't have to make a federal case out of everything. Last week, on voting rights, I mentioned American Legislative Exchange Council. They're instrumental in not lobbying against raising minimum wage of hamburger helpers. You know, it, the list goes on. Now, last night, uh, I came up with the American Accountability Council, or, or what was it, Federation, or, or something. And it was funded by dark money. And they're the ones running around with all of this QAnon stuff, and in addition to accusing people of being pedophiles, like our judge that was just nominated and passed for the Supreme Court. And it's just entirely ridiculous. Like, all you have to do is bring that word up, and the person is hung. There are also, these organizations are against voting rights and, and stuff. So it could get better and better. And you run in for public office at times, that can also affect you. It can come home, home to haunt you. Everybody's looking for some reason to condemn a candidate before they walk in a door. If you think that Joe Biden's a fool, well, two or three weeks ago, Donald Trump called up the Kremlin, some officials from the Kremlin, and asked for help with the next election. We don't need their help, you know? And by the way, call this number and compliment, and ask for a little more expediency for Ukraine. 1-2-0-2-225-3121, and ask for your representative. And you're free to talk about something else, too, if you have any ideas that have been kind of making you a little itchy or something like that. But it just goes on and on and on. And by the way, Darren Industries, the lady that did talk about Darren Industries last week on Dixon Avenue, I'm familiar with those people. I was down that area. And Darren Industries collected the Koz discount for, for taxes for 10 years, promptly moved out, and they're now up on Salem Road out of Archibald, along the, the New Robert Casey Highway. So, and they're getting another Koz. So that's 20 years of tax-free after they destroyed a neighborhood. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council this evening? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
None at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
So, yes, I do. I have a, I have a few. So, um, one, I spoke about this a couple weeks ago in caucus, and I asked about it again tonight. Mr. Waldenberg is going to reach out. So, Mr. Waldenberg, if you will, if we could reach out to the administration about the Civil Service Commission, I noticed that there's been a minimal amount of members at some of the last couple meetings. I have a concern about the amount of members that are there and some of the decisions that are being made. So if we could see how many people around this board, if there's plans to put anybody else on this board, and, and where the administration is going from there.
I will.
Thank you. The second one is, I did take a look at the licenses coming in, and I did notice that 430 of the 530 rental registration licenses came in in the month of March alone. I think there was only about 100 in the months of January, February. If we could just send a correspondence to Eileen Cipriani just to see what the difference is with March, if we're doing something correct here. I, I'm glad to see that many rental registration licenses are coming in. And then the third thing is, I do know, since we did speak about it in caucus, and I do, I do know that Mr. McCandrick was going to bring it up, but I just wanted to touch on the finance piece, and it was mentioned in public comment tonight. On, on the bill list that we got, or on the, we had, in the HR department, we had $97,397 were spent in the month of March for professional services for our labor council. When looking into it a little bit, for the year 2022, $162,441 dollars have been spent so far. So I was just going to have Mr. Waldenberg reach out to our business administrator to see if we can get an itemized list of billing for labor council. And that is all.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Just one thing tonight. I had mentioned this in caucus, so I thought I'd mention it during our meeting as well. Towards the end of last year, after the budget was passed, I had mentioned that I would really like to begin having budget conversations earlier this year, and to have our plans settled going into the summer and fall. And I would like to revisit those conversations again and send communications to Mr. West to find out when we can have a discussion about that and set up some, some dates for meetings. And I'll stay in communication with Councilman Schuster, as well as, as Chair of Finance. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
I do. So, we spoke about Rice, about this in council, I mean, in caucus. You know, if you blink, it's gonna, it's gonna be May. You never know with today with the inclement weather we have. But every week... Sorry. So I think you heard the first part, right? If you blink, it's gonna be May. You never know with today's weather. Every week, Ms. Hodeanis comes in and, and asks about the update of the contracts. And administration always assures us that it's happening in a timely manner, and negotiations are taking place. Well, as chairman on the Committee of Public Safety, I've had the opportunity to speak to e-board members from the fire department, the police department, and I even talked to somebody from DPW. And what they told me is, well, the fire department, maybe they met, not maybe, they met once. And then they also had a, a healthcare presentation. They're not counting that as negotiations. And I don't blame them. So what's happening is, and say, the police maybe, okay, they met twice supposedly next week. And for DPW, I think they said they met twice. And the issue I'm having is, I'm hearing that the lawyers are meeting and fine-tuning the negotiations. I'm hearing from the executive boards, the negotiating team from the unions, that, well, they're not getting any information. And as to what Schuster said, Mr. Schuster, you know, they're billing us, billing everybody in this room, the, the labor council. So they're spending money on something. And it's not sit-down negotiations. They've only sat down once with the fire department, maybe twice with the police department, and twice with DPW since January. So I would like to make a motion to clarify, because I'm hearing everything, every different, different things from different sides. So for clarity's sake, I would like to make a motion to request a timeline slash meeting dates that actually occurred with the union representatives sitting down with administration. Not lawyers talking to lawyers and billing us, for all three expired contracts. Could you please do that, Mr. Waldenberg?
I will, Mr. McCandrick.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second that.
On the question?
On the question, could we also include in that, could we get how many proposals have been submitted to each?
All right. I don't want to get into specifics of it. I, I think proposals, I guess they'd be able to release that. Not the specifics thereof, but how much back and forth. I think that, well, I can speak to that. So I heard one proposal was delivered to the police, or the fire department at 9:00 before a meeting, their first meeting. So how can you read through, digest at 9:00 at night, meeting the next day? So I heard of one. And then I heard the police was even a little more alarming. They were given the proposal in the morning, the day of negotiations. So, I mean, if you want to throw that in there, I'm, I'm okay with that.
On Mr. Schuster's point, we could request a, you know, executive session. I know that's what they'll come back with and request anyway. But, you know, if you want to get into specifics, we could also...
I was just looking at how many, just, just a number of how many. That, I wasn't looking at specifics, just, I think it goes into how many times they've met, how many proposals have been submitted by each.
Okay.
As I stated in caucus, I'm interested in requesting an executive session about the negotiations to get a better sense of, of where they are, and maybe some more information that we wouldn't be able to get and release to the public.
So would you be, Mr. McAndrew, would you be in favor of requesting both?
Well, I don't want to be denied because of the two other pieces.
Okay. Well, we could send that, we could send them separately.
How about we vote on this motion?
Okay.
And we send correspondence down for the two, you know, of course, we want an executive session for an update. I'll want one definitely after knowing how many dates occurred or not.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. All those in favor of Mr. McAndrew's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Is that all?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. First off, just on public comment, just in terms of the electric cars, there's been no, you know, final decisions on any spending of ARP money. That's going to be a process we move through in the coming weeks and months. In terms of the fire truck, if there's OECD money or CDBG money being spent there, that was approved in the action plan last, I believe it was May or June, when we approved the action plan. And that's the only way we could spend our current allotment of CDBG money. And also, this was also in the capital budget we approved back in September. So it's not like we haven't voted on any part of this. There has been, you know, so that for any CDBG money to be spent, the action plan needs to be approved. That was approved last year, and then it was also included in the capital budget. In terms of your, one of your, Mr. Coy, one of your requests last week regarding the marijuana drug bust, we did get a response from Chief Carroll, who said that, you know, you outlined the disparity between the illegal drug trade and the regulated commercial trade, and the estimated street values were based on the criminal investigation, not dispensary prices. That was the answer we got from the chief there. I know Ms. Schumacher brought up Wyoming Avenue. We did get an email late this afternoon that the last homeowner signed off on it. So now it has to be sent to DEP to amend the original permit. I've been told that'll only take a day or two to then come back. And then we could, you know, then they'll have to go out and schedule work with the homeowners. And I will look into if we have a list of when each block was, you know, previously paved in the past. A couple of, Mr. Waldenberg, would we also, would we, a couple of weeks ago, I made a request regarding the crime report statistics and when they'll be back up on City Protect. Would we be able to follow up with Chief Carroll to see if they've made any progress to getting those, to getting that, the crime stats updated on the website?
I'll follow up.
Thank you. And also, I did bring up, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. Waldenberg reached out to PA American Water regarding manhole covers in the Oakmont section. So the one on Karen Drive were replaced, but the ones mentioned in the email I gave you on Debbie Drive were not. So they just wanted to see if they could get an update on that. And I'll give you this as a reference. Also got a request for a street light replacement at the corner of Ward Place in Harrington Ave, which is in the Weston Field area. The light's been out for almost two years. The resident states, because of walking difficulties, they are unable to get the pole number. And it is dark and dangerous in the area for those just parking or using garages or walking at night. I actually stopped down there on my way to the meeting today, and there was no pole number. You could see where the plaque was basically ripped off the pole. So I'll give you this, too, if you could check with DPW to see if they could go and investigate that.
I will, Mr. Downhill.
Thank you. And that's, that's all I have for this evening.
5B for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Marissa Duffy, 105 Pequess Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Scranton, effective April 11th, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know the Duffy family my whole life, and I want to wish Marissa Duffy well on her new position.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I'm pleased with this appointment. I'm glad to see that we've found a new Parks and Rec Director. And I also appreciate all that's included in her resume, including her bachelor's that's in Recreation Park and Tourism Management, which I think will be really helpful towards, towards the position in addition to her past experiences.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution. Accepting a donation presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Greg L. Sunday and Joan M. Sunday in the amount of $5,000 in memory of Scranton firefighter Stephen Sunday to purchase equipment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I think this is wonderful that this family is graciously and generously donating money, again, in their son, in their son's name for the Scranton Fire Department.
I'd just also like to add, and I think I mentioned it before, I knew Stephen Sunday from the time he was in elementary school, and he was just a wonderful, wonderful kid and grew up to be a wonderful man and a firefighter for our city. And sadly, he passed away just over a year ago. So it's greatly appreciated that Greg and Joan are donating this money in Stephen's name. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I agree. We appreciate the donation to the Fire Department from the Sunday family, this being their second donation. It's just incredible. And we appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution. Accepting a donation from the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter of a Dean &amp; Tyler canine bite suit in the amount of $1,360.38 provided to the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a lease purchase agreement with Leasing Two Incorporated to finance the purchase of a Sutfin Custom Rescue in the amount of $715,000 for the city of Scranton Fire Department for a period of seven years commencing May 1st, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, no business at this time. Eighth order, file the council number nine, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It is tabled to allow for additional input and any additional amendments. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.